All right. All right, I'd like to call to order the fifth of August two thousand twenty five, planning board meeting, that's your planning board meeting. So we'll start with attendance. Start at this side this time, just to be clear.
John Clark.
Teresa Fenimore.
Susan Young. Marla Herrick.
Dean Leffler.
John Duke.
Okay. So I have to immediately leave my position here. Because I'm not allowed, I, we found out I'm not even supposed to sit up here during, if I'm recusing.
I'm gonna bring up one concern because we have the select board ex officia, or the select board member, the select board ex officio member, the alternate. And you can only have one select board ex officio on the planning board. So only one person's been served as a voting member from the select board at a time. So I want to know which one's gonna be.
Well, that would be Marla.
Okay.
I'll just be.
All right. Okay, so we have an.
I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that, so we know.
Who came up with all these rules? Probably the, geez. Need a Bible. I'll be back. All right, yeah, could you stay over there? I'm kidding. All right, so.
Okay, it is six thirty-three, and we're gonna open the public hearing. Uh, this is for a major subdivision application, Lauren and Christopher Oliver. Uh, looking to subdivide their property into, um, it's a five acre property. I mean, five lots?
Five lots, yeah. Yeah, ninety-six acres, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Close to a hundred.
Ninety-six point three.
Hundred twenty-eight.
Oh, hundred twenty-eight.
Yes. Do you wanna start with a presentation again?
I don't know if what we want. The checklist. So we gotta go over waivers.
You want them to do the presentation first?
Usually the presentation's after, 'cause you gotta make sure the application's complete.
Why not, if we're all?
Yeah, 'cause the application needs to be reviewed, to make sure it's complete first.
Okay.
I didn't put a copy of the application. It should be printed separately. And then we have to go over the waivers too.
Yep.
Where I reviewed it.
Okay, so the applicant name is Blackwater Estates LLC. And this is on tax map, lot number two, address project five. Your plat application and submission requirements, uh, where we're gonna begin. And as the submitted items, the complete application is what we're gonna look at first. I think everybody has the application in their packet.
Everybody should have a copy.
Everybody should have a copy.
It's in a separate handout, because I didn't include it with the current packet, because it's from last packet. So it should start with the oil tender statement that they made for the subdivision, followed by everything they included with the application.
This is, is, you looking for this? Write this right here, right?
Well, that's their, one of their updated summary. I'm gonna come now.
Show where you wanna begin. I said you drive away in here.
Okay.
Okay.
Teresa, about it?
Yep. I did look at the plat recording.
That's yours. There's a lot.
There's a lot of stuff here.
There is a lot of stuff.
There's a very big something there, but.
There is, there's a lot.
I did measure the plan, I did go over the topography, yeah, I've included all that. So the plan's sufficient.
So what are you suggesting, should we just kinda go down one, two, three?
Yeah, just look over all the documents.
I mean, you looked at it.
I did look at it.
Does it look complete?
It does, other than the items that need waivers.
Okay, which, so.
Which Teresa has the document where the, with the waiver requests.
Okay, so.
Which the board will have to review, each one of the waiver requests. And then make a motion on whether you'll grant the waiver or not grant the waiver.
Okay. But you know the, the application's complete.
The application's complete.
So that's what we have.
Other than the waivers.
Other than the waivers together.
So I would say we can move on from that.
Yeah.
Is that your job?
Well, it's still not complete yet, 'cause we haven't gone through the waivers.
Okay, let's see the waivers.
All right, so moving on to the waivers. We have subdivision regulations, section seven point three point B point one. The owner is requesting a waiver from a formal landscaping schedule, although they are planning on installing trees and plantings after construction. All the spurt, uh, disturbed areas mulched and seeded. The conservation mix, if needed, for erosion control. Any disturbance of ground cover will be ceded and mulched in accordance with the erosion control details found on plan sheet six, uh, C six.
There should be a whole set of plans in the packet, which are maybe a few of the plans.
Right.
I don't know if you could help us find.
Yeah, can I just, can I just make a suggestion?
Yeah.
So, uh, my name's, my name's Bill Davidson from Oil Tan, uh, Oil Tanner. I'm the engineer for the subdivision. And typically how I've seen other towns do it is when we do an application like this. So we are asking for some waivers. So typically, it's, the plans looked at, um, if it's complete with all we have for our plats and everything, and then we have the exceptions that we're asking for, for the waivers. So usually the, um, the plans are voted on, if it's, if it's complete, except for the, for the waivers. Then we would go do our presentation, we explain the waivers while we're going through. And when it comes down, um, to after that, you either would approve the waivers or not approve them, if you're not comfortable with them or whatever. And then, then, you know, ultimately end up having a motion. I don't know if that's exactly how you've done it before, but it's gonna be hard.
Yes.
It's maybe hard to understand some of the waivers without having the presentation first.
Yep, so, um, that does sound very helpful, uh, if everybody else is.
Please, yes.
And that way we can go through waivers with your sound explain them as we go.
Absolutely.
All right, so. You're up.
All right.
Well, let's start with the waivers.
Uh, since most everybody here's been with this project for, for a year, but not everybody. So if I could give kind of a.
Yep.
Top level real quick, I think that might be helpful. My name's Ryan Oliver, uh, on the paperwork, it's probably Christopher. My wife and I, Lauren, she's on her way here, she's stuck in the world. Are the ones proposing the subdivision. And the general idea is that we, uh, we moved to New Hampshire, always wanted to live here. Found this property, it's within driving distance of the hospital, and said, hey, maybe we can make a, uh, small subdivision for our family that we, uh, run as a, as a personal farm, much like other members on Little Hill Road. And, uh, 'cause our family, you know, over the years, is kind of scattered to different parts of the country like they do, and we'd like to bring everybody back together. So that's the purpose of this, this project, is one, uh, family homes, two, a farm, and then three is conservation. Because even though we're subdividing the property and using some of it, the remainder, uh, we hope to take care of, uh, similar to what's described in the master plan. The, the nature of lobster. Yeah, so over this last year, we've gone, you know, we've gone through a variety of proposals. Um, we, we can go over the ones up here in a moment, but effectively, uh, where we've ended up is having a private road that comes off of Little Hill, that then services these five lots. And then for fire purposes, we're installing a pond that allows us to man up those. And that we've done, uh, over with Emmett several times, uh, to make sure that that's to his liking, as well as some of the other firefighters. And same with the little, so I, you know, that's kind of the whole.
Sure.
Thank you, Oliver.
Uh, again, so Bill Davidson from Oil Tanner, uh, we were here, uh, last month, did a brief overview, some of you weren't there, so I'll just go through it, if you have any questions or whatever.
Would you mind, though, if we could just, right now, stick to the waivers?
Sure.
Get this section done?
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Yep, no, I don't, I do not.
About the C six.
So the first waiver, I'm gonna get my glasses. Unfortunately, I'm getting a little older. So the first one is for landscaping. So as Ryan talked about, they're planning on, this is gonna be, it's gonna be a private road. There's gonna be five lots for it, they are gonna do some landscaping things, and they have plans for that. They, we're asking for a waiver from a, from a formal, um, requirement of that. We have checklist items nine, ten, twelve, and thirteen on the remainder lot. So the whole entire property, the, the whole entire property, you can see it here, this little box right here. You guys have, all have plans?
Yeah.
Yeah. Back of the large versions here.
Sorry, I just wanna make sure. So this little box right here, that's in here, is this, is this view here. So there's a, there's a good portion of the lot that's not shown on this plan. So the remainder lot that we have is ninety-six acres here. So when we go and provide on these plans for the subdivision, we need to provide topo and soils and all that, which is detailed information for this area here. We have all this area here that we didn't, we just haven't mapped. It's a remainder lot, it's ninety-six acres, so, um, there's really no reason for to do that. Any of the developable area that we have here, we've mapped. So we're asking for a waiver for that.
So that's the second waiver, right?
Yep, that's the second waiver.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, the third one would be the subdivision regulations for the definition of a lot. And this goes back to where Russell's, with the, with the ZBA, um, and the variance and all of that. So, uh, we were just asking for a waiver from that. We actually heard back from, um, from, uh, the ZBA that, or no, actually, it was the selectman or the attorney.
Well, I sent it to our attorney, and our attorney said it didn't need it.
So we wouldn't need to go to the selectman and get a variance, so that was good. So this, that's a waiver, but it's, it sounds like it's got taken care of. And then there's other subdivision regulations for seven-three-B-six, uh, fiscal impact study, traffic impact, uh, community facility impact studies, that for a, for a five-lot subdivision in this location, uh, we were asking that we wouldn't have to, um, do that. There's really, you know, school impact, environmental assessment.
We were below the coordinates.
And then the last one that we have, uh, I'd like to bring one other one up, but the last one that we have is, so on our road, it's about nine hundred and fifty feet. And in your regulations, you ask for a, um, for a cross-section every fifty feet. So fifty, hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred, it's basically a section of, of the road, which is, which is shown by the grading that we have. It's just a requirement, um, so this is all graded out. And every fifty feet, they have a section, you, you create a section, and I don't wanna say contractors don't build plant, build roads that way anymore, but they don't really use that to build roads anymore. So we don't normally provide cross-sections with it. So we were asking for a waiver for that, um, because there's not much of a purpose for it. And then, so last time that we came here, uh, we had NH RPC, the, uh, National Regional Planning Commission, do a, uh, do a review on it. And then, since then, the, um, the plans have gone out to a third-party engineer, which was KV Partners, I believe it was, which we, we just got today, which was fantastic. We were able to see that before the planning board, and that's much appreciated. So I would also like to add in a waiver for section eight point four and eight point two, which is the road, uh, which is the street construction. And the reason that I wanna do that is, this is gonna be a gravel road. It requires in your, in your regulations to be paved. We've always wanted it to be, to be gravel. We're still meeting, you know, it's still gonna have bank run, it's still gonna have the crushed gravel and everything, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be paved. And some of the, so this is a private, private road, but it's, it's basically a driveway for, for five lots. So some of the dimensions, like they have a curve radius in it, on a, on a public road that you would drive for two hundred feet, we have it at a hundred and twenty-five feet, because, so we would ask, now that we have this letter from, um, KV Partners, I'd like to add that in as an additional waiver that we weren't aware of. Because there's been some talk, um, Ryan's been, um, before you guys, uh, conceptually, uh, had talked about how to develop this and, um, you know, roadways and private drives and things like that, and common drives. And I think this is what we kind of, um, came to based on the conversations and feedback that we received. So I'd like to, like to add that in, so we didn't have to do the dimensional requirements for if you were doing a thirty-five mile an hour. So, but that one, that one's not written down, I could certainly write it down, or I don't know if this is good enough, Russell.
I think that'd be good enough.
Yeah. Okay, um, so that's the waivers.
Want to be appropriate to ask them their question right now?
Sure.
Can I have your opinion on the cross-section? That's who you're talking about.
What is, I guess I'm gonna ask, what is a cross-section?
Yep.
What do you mean?
So, basically, when we, so these lines right here, these are grade lines. So when we have, say this is the existing ground. And now we're building the road, and it's now gonna be, it's gonna be two feet higher.
Yep.
So we go up to the sides, and then we have three-to-one slopes. So basically, that cross-section looks very similar, or a profile, you think it was a profile?
Yeah.
So this is, this right here is a cross-section, a typical cross-section of the road. So you would see a different one, you would see one at fifty feet, at a hundred feet, at a hundred and fifty feet. And what happens is, when we build the road, if this is the existing ground and we have a profile, it may go, it may go up a little bit, it may go down. So all that is, is just showing at that two hundred and fifty feet down the road, that's what it looks like, four hundred feet down, that's what it looks like. And the reality of it is, back in the day, New Hampshire DOT, they used to build, they used to build their roads and everything by the cross-section. So they would use the elevations on the cross-sections. Nowadays, they don't, they don't do that anymore. So it's really, I don't, I don't wanna say it's useless, but it's.
I'm good with that.
What is your opinion?
Because he, he, um, he said it, I didn't, it's useless.
Yeah, no.
Add a few words. Thank you much. So should we discuss about each one?
Yes. I'll make a motion.
The first one we're gonna vote on is subdivision regulation for section seven-three, seven point three point B point one. It's about landscaping, um, and the landscaping. How do you all feel about that, not having a plan for the landscaping?
I think considering what we're looking at here, I mean, a lot of times, when you think about a small subdivision, you know, in a, in a city, you, you.
You have landscaping.
You have landscaping, but, you know, we're more of a natural, is that weird to say? More of a natural type of where we are at, and I, I think that's overkill, myself. So my, my vote would be to, to agree to that waiver.
It, it reminds me of some, um, some complaints, a set of complaints that we get. And that's why I thought maybe the landscaping plan, to have a plan would be appropriate, also for the neighbors as well.
I think where it's, where the way it's located and stuff, unless they wanna drive out and visit them, they're not gonna really see a lot of the landscaping. That's just me.
And I hope they do.
Well, well, right, right, I mean, I mean, I think that's, in the big scheme of things, I get it, you, you look across the street, and you, you got a subdivision, and then, and there's, you know, piles of loam, and, you know, all this stuff that you're now, is, but that's, that's probably why it was there. But in this case, where it's a, it's more of a private subdivision, I think that is a very reasonable request. Plus, it's a larger area, you know, a lot of this landscaping too could be when you have a small subdivision, you know what I mean? But we're not talking a small subdivision, we're talking, everything's kinda spread out. That's right. So that's my vote.
Yeah, Dean, what do you think?
Ian, how, to me, it's a private law, it isn't like five lots on Little Hill Road, where everybody's gonna be driving by and looking at it. You've got to physically go on his property to see whether, what the landscaping is, to me.
Is it appropriate to ask the audience for a, for a?
Your chair.
Well, then I'd like to ask the audience first, what? Any objections?
I have no issues.
Any comments?
I, I do, I just have one thing to say. Working with this gentleman and his wife, it's probably gonna look like a park when he's done.
Thank you, thank you for your feedback. Anybody wanna make?
I agree with that. It's been a very professional presentation. And these people are coming to town to, to benefit the community. And I, I think, I agree with my colleague, obviously, I'm not a voting member tonight, but I agree with my colleague on what she said. And I, I think, you know, anything we can do to help this happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll move. Except the waiver for the landscaping.
All set, then? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is a subdivision checklist for items nine, ten, twelve, and thirteen, a larger portion of the remaining lot. Do you have any concerns about that preservation?
I think I'm gonna go off of kinda what I said in the larger version. You know, it's, they're, they're keeping it located, it sounds like at some point they, they're not looking to, um, develop it out. And, um, I think that to make them go through all that extra cost is not necessary.
Any more comments? Any comments in the audience? Wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive what you just said. 'Cause don't I, I didn't write it down? And, um.
That'll do. Any seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
The third item we're, um, we're discussing, subdivision regulation requirement for the definition of a lot.
We don't need to worry about that one.
Oh, never mind, that one's offset, that's, that's why I have a check mark next.
I would like to say one, one thing I know that, that's important on the town level, is that the rest of this waiver, um, talks about the maintenance and the liability of the private road not having anything to do with the town. So that will all be on, on the R, so just so we're clear with that.
I mean, that's still the case, because that's part of the RSA. But, yeah, that comes in when you get your bill.
Yeah, it's just pretty important that we, we had that in the waiver.
It's all on you.
The last item, what was added, which is eight point four and eight point two, the street construction?
Uh, yeah, but there is another one about, uh, subdivision regulations with the, the impact studies. You skipped one on the waivers.
Oh, the, yeah.
It's seven point three-B-six.
Traffic and all that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Which is, is pretty straightforward, but.
That is very straightforward, yes. Yes, that one talks about the fiscal impact, um, less than two percent existing dwellings in the town, which is true, the traffic impact is not applicable because there's less than twenty family units. I should also mention that we did reach out to Salisbury, just as, um, closing loop on that discussion, and, and they did get back to us and said that they don't see any adverse effect on the town of Salisbury.
Yeah, these, these impact studies are, are more to, um, or my, my belief is they're more for the town to protect themselves if somebody came in and did a fifty-lot subdivision, or whatever, where now all of a sudden you have eighty school-aged children.
Yes.
I do make, um, any discussion on that one? Any discussion? I, I do, um, make a motion to approve this one, the subdivision regulation requirements, seven point three-B-six.
Second all?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we'll go back to the eight point four and eight point two street construction. This one I do, I am concerned about. The main reason I'm concerned is the storms that we've had and the damage that the storms have caused. Paving does alleviate some of that, if it's done correctly. I understand that it doesn't have to be paved. But my concern is not having any document in writing that says that the town won't be responsible for, uh, damage due to storms coming through. On top of that, if there's an emergency at one of the homes, and there's runoff and such, and we didn't get to it, for safety reasons, my concern is that, that ought to be paved because it's such a long distance, and the longer distance just makes sense, it's a greater opportunity of, um, storm damage, runoff and what have you. That's just my opinion. What do you think?
I'm, I'm not a fan of paving.
Okay.
So, and, um, and I look at it as that, you know, they're responsible and the liability is on them. Yeah, I mean, that could happen in anywhere, and even sometimes. As you, as you can see
Yes.
on the state road, where, really, when you look at that in the, in the, in the distance of that, how much that took out of that.
A lot.
Um, yeah. I look at it as, I, I would, I think, again, possibly if you had fifty homes out there, it would be another situation, but, you know, they're taking on the liability, and, um, I look at it as, that's what rural New Hampshire is all about, and, uh, that's how I feel.
I, I think I'd feel better if there was an HOA in place that would put the responsibility on, on, um, the property versus on the town.
Sure.
That would make a big difference in my book.
So we've, uh, prepared two types of documents regarding that. One is a full HOA that specifically talks to road maintenance, and the other is a version where that comes into, into effect, you know, once we, if we ever have to put with a lot. But I'm happy to do either version of that.
Do you have them with you this evening?
I have one, I think you've got it.
I've got the one, and I submitted it to our attorney, and he would've gotten that one, but we didn't waive the attorney's privacy on that stuff, that was what I tried to bring up.
Oh darn.
I forgot about it.
No worries.
More or less, he'll review it and just make sure it, 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 um, makes our concerns feel better, 'cause, you know.
Yeah, I can read off the attorney's recommendations of the letter when we get to a point where we're talking about the HOA.
Well, yeah, we did submit one for that exact purpose to view.
But it sounds like, pretty much, as long as you feel, I'm not speaking for you, but you feel comfortable, as long as the attorney likes that and that's in place. Not really, so you speak, I won't. Sorry, I don't know how to do that.
Can you tell I don't play poker?
You know, the one, I think you bring up some very valid points. To, to, to the moment, to this moment, we've kind of imagined that we're building the base of the road the exact same as, as we're better probably. base of the road the exact same as, as we're better probably than Little Hill, but, as a paved road that the town can do, um, without the pavement. So, if we wanted to go back and add that pavement because we found there were maintenance issues, I mean, it's, um, it's already prepared for that as well. So, it's just my kind of view.
Yeah, I think I'd feel better to see the complete documents.
Yeah, I have, I can pull them up on the laptop if you'd like. Um, but I don't have it front of the laptop.
You want me to read the attorney's recommendations while we're talking?
That would be wonderful.
Is this on the deferred or the full?
I didn't have the full version, so I only had the small version that he provided us. And I, I think our attorney had some concerns. He gave about five bullet points. He had his first concern, who would be, who's the building and maintaining the road? So, that wasn't included as part of it. Who's gonna manage the stormwater? The structure should be laid out in the HOA. Who will be building it, maintaining it? Same thing with the, what will this community septic or individual septic systems be as part of the HOA? Will it be community, individual? Will it be? I, I thought you said you were gonna be, well, as the septics on each lot. But that should be laid out. The town should get an easement to pass over the private road for, say, ambulance services, police services. And the town should reserve the right that if the HOA were to be dissolved, that they would have to come back to the planning board and do the applicable, get approvals there. And then the town may wish to acquire the HOA named the town as an additional insured on the road. So, I'm not sure. I'd have to ask the attorney more about that one. But, yeah, I think it's just to protect the town. If somebody got hurt going down the road and then they sued the town as well. That's basically his primary concerns.
So, that, so there were two versions. And this was, this was just something I wasn't sure which direction to take at the time. It was, one was, well, I'm responsible and as long as I own all the lots, an HOA just means that I'm finding myself, I guess. Um, so I was saying I would put it in the deed where if we were sold a lot, then an HOA automatically is created, called the deferred. However, I'm perfectly happy to, to set it up where the HOA is already enacted. That's not a problem. And I've got a document for that that's a road association. And I, I think it probably counts for a number of different issues.
Yeah, I would, I would guess so. That's one of those things you can submit it to me and then we'll submit it back to our attorney and have them look at it. And then make recommendations on this more outdated one. Is that's okay with the board?
Yeah, I, I think that would be sufficient.
I thought that was for you.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That would be great.
There's more questions than the paperwork.
Yeah.
It's gonna benefit yourself as well and your family.
And I've said, at least to one of the board members who called me about it, I think my concern is, is if, you may not sell the lots, but we're talking like sixty, seventy years down the line when one does eventually leave. Is somebody gonna remember who's working in this office to make sure that that actually happens? So, that's why I think personally I would feel more comfortable having it in place upfront. Because then we don't have to worry about that.
And you would just hook it to the deed?
Yes.
Correct.
Right? Yeah. That's not a big deal.
And I could, I can add something too. So, from the maintenance and everything, that would be on, on Ryan. And in the review that we got from KV Partners, they talked about this, this area here having an easement for when they, when people turn around in here. So, what we can do is, and we can put it on the subdivision plan, is create an easement in this whole location here, all the way down the road for, for access for Emmett and whatever need be. The same thing that we have, um, there's an easement on, uh, on the pond that's gonna be used for the, for the diagram as well. So, we could just include that and wrap that up into the plan as well.
That would be fine.
Actually, out at the end of the road, we've been turning around out there so many years with the, not the highway equipment, but to maintain the roads. I mean, that's pretty much grandfathered into, no matter what anybody did there, they couldn't happen. And then listening to the responsibility of, of things. I maintain Westwind Village's private road. We just did some major work out there for that association. And I take care of Frost Lane's private road. I've taken care of Frost Lane down there for eighteen years. And two years over Westwind Village. They have an association, um, takes care of the road. And if something happens in one of them and they, you can't get in there, it'd be no different than, if your culvert washed out, go into your house.
Yep.
It's the oldest culvert in town. It's the old, I think it's the last stone culvert in town.
Yes.
And that washed out of an act of God. And for some reason you needed, you, you, you just, you have to do what you can at the time. And sometimes you just can't do anything if it's during the storm.
I agree with that.
Madam Chair.
I mean, the attorney can say this and say that, which is all fine, but you gotta live it.
So, just a, just a footnote with Emmett, I agree with him. I'm not real fond of, as, as board member and with my colleague, I think who I kind of signal might agree with me. The stuff about making them buy additional insurance, I, I think that's unnecessary.
Yeah, no, that, that, in, I...
I think that's very unnecessary.
And if somebody gets hurt down there, they come back to sue the town.
Right. I, you know, the town's, the town's insured anyway, number one. We respond to many crazy, our new folks respond to many crazy things. And, and I'm with Emmett on that. I think that's an overstep. I appreciate attorneys, but sometimes they, they spend more time overstepping the problems you need to deal with. Uh, I would, I would offer, as a citizen and as a board member, we might consider that. We waive that. You're the one to try.
Well, these are just recommendations.
Yeah, I get that. But I mean, you gotta speak up.
Not to worry about that recommendation.
Right. You gotta speak up once in a while too. And I mean, you know, I, I, I think that's an overstep. You know, it's like telling everybody owns a driveway. Emmett, is fire, the fire team gonna come in? Gee, the fire truck went back up into the hole. You know, that's, that's a risk we take. It's probably true. I think we're saying the same thing.
Yeah. And there's a lot of dead end, a lot of dead end driveways and a lot of dead end streets. And there's only one way to get there and...
We're making these people do it and everybody around the lake and everybody else is gonna, a private road that goes more than five hundred feet needs to be doing it too. So, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just saying, you know, things get a little crazy.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't, I don't want to see them have to be forced by, sure, sure. My fa, my colleague over here, I'd like to hear his thoughts.
I agree a hundred percent.
I do like to see that, uh, it's gonna be in the deed or whatever is that. You can drive down there and check out the fire plug. And to do stuff like that and, um...
Yeah, 'cause you're down the road. You just never know if there might be not as nice of people as all of you people, you know? You can't come down this road. Oh, but if I have a fire, make sure you're here.
Or on Wednesday night, if you wanna go up there and do something with it, you know, you can. Which I know these folks are gonna be, because they're gonna be on the firehouse before we're done.
I trust your judgment. You know, you're part of the public safety team. You know, wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments?
So, now what do we do?
So, do we vote on the last waiver? Do we know that it doesn't have to be paved? Or are we still up to discussion about that one?
I would make a motion to, to, um, that it doesn't have to be paved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So, that covers that.
All the waivers.
That's all the waivers.
All the waivers that don't pay. And the fee's been paid.
Now, we're gonna make the motion to say the application is complete?
Yes, um...
Before you do that, just make sure you have all the information you need to make a decision. I think you do, but I just wanted to point that out.
Hey, listen, we're just not computers in the situation.
I know. If you feel like you need anything else, this is the time.
I feel that they have done a very complete and thorough job. And granted, I haven't done a lot of these, but I've been part of them. And I've had my own. So, I feel like they've been very cooperative to what, where our rules and regulations are.
So, that's the motion. You do it complete?
Okay, so, let's, let's take a vote. Do you feel the application is complete?
Who's the second?
I'll second it.
Well, you made the motion.
Oh, I made the motion? I was just chatting.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Complete. So, number three says what are offered?
Oh, we're done with that now? It's complete? Yep.
Because none of the boxes were tapped, so I'm like...
Well, some of them are for major or for minor. But then we already, that's the part that I went through.
And I'm physically here as well.
You are physically. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
So, can I come back up now?
Well, now, we're still in the hearing.
Oh.
We haven't even, we have to now go see who could present.
Yeah, I can go through, I can go through. And I know there's some people here that make some comments as well. So, let me just, I'll quickly go through. Then we can take any questions or comments. So, we've gone through a lot of it already, but I'll, I'll just say there's, there's five lots, um, that are gonna be done. They're all, um, between, um, five and ten acres. And then the larger remainder that we talked about is ninety-six acres. All gonna be well on septic, which is very typical for, for this area. We talked about the roadway coming in. Uh, we are gonna have a, a fire pond and a, and a dry hydrant. I know that, uh, Ryan and, and Warren have talked with, with Emmett about the fire pond. And we went and kind of massaged it a little bit on what you were looking for with the height from the bottom of the strainer and things like that. So, I think we have incorporated pretty much everything that they were, uh, looking for. We also gone through the planning commission's review. We've addressed all those, um, with the, the new plans that we sent. And then we have the engineering review that was from KV Partners, um, that I think we're in agreement with everything on, on that. And those are, uh, more or less housekeeping, kind of cleanup type things that we can revise the plans. Obviously, we need to add the easements and all the everything that we just talked about. But, um, for the most part, um, that's the same. I don't know how much further anybody wants me to go. Like, on this plan here, uh, we do have some, some wetlands in here that we hatch. That's what that hatch color is. We're not, we're not impacting any wetlands. Originally, in the state of New Hampshire, if you're over a hundred thousand square feet of disturbance, you need to get a, a permit from the state, alteration of terrain. We actually made the pond a little bit smaller. We're under a hundred thousand square feet now. That was a little bit of a change from the previous plan that we had. But everything else has stayed the same since, since we were here. So, I'm sure between us, we can answer pretty much any questions you have.
When are you gonna break around and stop the, if you haven't already?
Uh, no, we haven't. We're waiting for approval.
Well, yeah, I get that. But sure, that's...
I'd probably start clearing, um, this fall. And then, um, I don't imagine the road going to just crack for springs or something.
Probably the next spring, homes are stocking up. Okay.
And it'll probably just be really one home beginning. The others will kind of filter in or...
Yeah, just, just curious. Is the, the template?
I was curious. There was, I didn't go down and check. There was some work being done down there?
We removed, uh, well, we did some test bits in order to understand the...
Like today? Oh, I mean, there were a couple of trucks down there today doing something. I didn't know if it was connected to yours.
It wasn't me.
Okay, maybe it was, maybe it was, I don't know, power line or the equipment. Don't know. Just was curious.
Yeah, that wasn't me. Now I'm curious.
Gotta drive up there and see what's going on?
Check my camera.
I drive, it's true. I drive past my house and do it, well, I go through flood drains sometimes depending on where I'm going. But I like to, I like to drive down and see what's going on down the road. Yeah, there was one car. This has nothing to do with this, nevermind. One car that drives by our house every single day.
But not on, but they don't live on the road.
No.
Is it a red pickup?
It's a red car.
Yeah, but they're very nice people.
I, I figured that. I tried to wave at them, but they never looked.
I stopped to visit them. She had a stroke last, no.
So, they like doing, going out?
They're big hunters. They go.
Sorry, this has nothing to do with this. But it's Little Hill Road, so...
We survey it all the time. It's under surveillance.
Do we vote on the application or?
So, I have the checklist.
That's what it says, so...
So, we're going through that.
That's a public comment?
So, have, have we done public comment?
That's what, that's what we just did.
Well, we're gonna open it to those in favor and those opposed.
All righty. In the public?
In the public.
Okay, so, those in favor? And those opposed?
As much as I hate seeing developments.
If you have, can, can we fill out questions?
Absolutely.
This is the time to do it.
This is the time to ask. Where do you go?
You said that you, you were only gonna do one house for now. Is there a timeframe of when they have to, um, push the other houses in? Or because there'll be separate lots, it's not gonna matter?
So, the subdivision, once approved, is permanent. So, there will be no requirement of when the houses have to go in. But when they do get their permits, they'll have two years to complete the building permit, as a standard building permit would be.
Any more questions?
Absolutely.
Will you have to do any blasting?
Yeah, we haven't. So, um, when we were doing the survey and everything, as well as the, the soils, we did a lot of test fitting in there and see what we have for soils. And then I don't think ledge is gonna be a, ledge is gonna be a concern at all. The, um, the roads pretty much all filled going in, so we won't be cutting roads. Maybe a couple of big rocks, but...
You're bound to find rocks.
Well, that's anywhere.
There's a test, but I will say the test bits become far fewer than I expected. I think they turned them on to the walls there.
And one final question. The road name, who names the road? Is that a town duty or?
Well, that was one of the things that was mentioned by the engineer is that there was no na, no road name selected.
So, we, uh, yeah, we, in the HOA document, we put one, but we only recently kind of settled on one. We like, if we get to choose it.
You do get to choose it. So, it's part of the subdivision.
Final answer.
Russell, did you say that, that permit is, are the ones that name the road?
Typically, it's named in the subdivision.
Because I know other towns, like their historical society names the road. So, I just didn't know where it started.
Have anything like that. The only time I think I could look back is maybe go to the Blackberry Lane subdivisions and see who determined the name for Blackberry Lane. But I'm assuming it was the subdivided because the whole subdivision is called Blackberry Lane, so...
Yeah, typically, typically, the way we've seen it is that it would be the owner that does it. And then it goes through approval. Because if it's too close to an, uh, existing name that you have, police and fire could possibly get
Confused.
Confused. So, that's...
Also, we'll, we'll ask that question. Because we were thinking about Hemlock Hill.
Hemlock Hill?
There's a Hemlock Hollow.
Well, now, there is, but there is a Hemlock Hollow. There is a Hemlock Hollow road off in, uh, the Mutton Road. But it isn't recognized by nine one one. There is a sign up there and it does say Hemlock Hollow. But everybody that's out on Hemlock Hollow, their addresses are actually Mutton Road. I tried to get that all changed when Therese was here, but they wouldn't, nine one one wouldn't, um, accept, um... but they wouldn't... 911 wouldn't accept Hemlock Hollow as a street address. I don't know if it was never adopted or how it all went. So that's something to think about.
Clarifying or not. That's what we were thinking. If it's too close, there's no...
So what we did on Offs Pond Lane, that's a private driveway. And actually, it begins in Warner down to Davisville. And then when you get up onto the hill, it's off, and it's out there. And I hung the sign for the town, but it said Offs Pond. And then it has a private sign at the end, so it's listed as a street name, but it says private on the sign. That's how we do that in the past.
But wasn't it Warner that named it and not...
I honestly don't know who named it.
Did you have one in mind?
Nope.
I honestly don't know who did. Don't know why Warner would have named it.
I'm almost thinking she might be right, but I just know that he came home one night and it was named.
Well, you would know more about it.
Well, yes, my brother. It's where my brother lives. It's just, he's like, "Yeah, they named me Offs Pond Road." Or like, we just did a subdivision over in Bosquen, and they named that, and I can't remember the name right this minute. They just named it. I'm like, "Oh, all right."
The town did or the development?
Nope, town. No, we would be the development.
But I mean, the town could name it, but if these folks are going to spend all their money in...
Name it all of the lane.
It's got a rank to it. I try not to be...
What did she say? Oh, Oliver.
Very kind.
Hey, there you go.
I know Little Hill was named after his family.
Actually, really, around here a lot. It's actually Little's Hill.
Little's Hill, that's right.
Yeah, even Callroo was named after a family. Yeah.
It's Little's Hill?
Yeah, so we'll get totally... That was the original, Little's Hill. On the maps, it generally says Little Hill, but it was Little's Hill.
I want to make sure we have it right on our plate.
It's not the...
I'm sure it's not going to be a major problem.
No.
No.
Maybe it'll be a surprise, just like when people have babies.
Could be. Let's not do that. Let's just...
Do you even have sex now?
Now I'm a mess.
I'm very proud of that. Okay.
That's all the comment. We closed the public session and we begin again the race.
Okay, so...
Come up with a name and get it to us, so we can make it right.
Okay, 7:45, we're going to close the public session and go into discussion. How do you feel about the application?
I'm fine.
Fine.
Yep.
No issues, no concerns, nothing missing?
Other than the HOA regulations to be addressed.
The HOA, I'd really like my approval to be contingent upon an HOA.
And then there's one other concern is making sure the road gets built. Not saying that you're not going to drop off the face of the plane, but the town has presidents. If you look at these bills very late...
And that should be defined well in the HOA.
Yeah, I mean, there is the option of a road bond for the town, which means if they put money aside, and if they don't build the road, then the town takes that money and then builds the road. So that's something we'd have to work with the attorney on.
See, I didn't understand that, Russell.
So you do a road bond.
On what road?
So the road isn't constructed, so they take out a bond, like you would do for a timber bond, and say that this money's set aside to build the road. So if they eventually run out of money, don't build the road, something happens, that we have the bond as the town to say, "Okay, we're going to put the road in, so those lots aren't stranded on a paper road forever." Like Amber's Drive.
So that what... I don't understand if they didn't finish the road. I don't understand why the town's involved with the bond. I don't know. Last... Last I knew, the town, when you trucked logs out of their, on their roads, you had to put bonds in different towns, states. They've done away with all that stuff over the years, am I correct? Because I know the town of Bradford way back years ago, and I had my log truck pull all the log wood down out of there. And I had to go through the town and set up a bond and all that. And then a few years later, I got a check in the mail from them and it was...
So, yes, you still need to, like, we were just up in Presto. They, we had to put up a $10,000 bond coming out of a road, too. You know, and, yeah, the towns can kind of do what they want with that. Hopefully, they're reasonable. I think what, you know, and a lot of times insurance companies, you know, it's actually to get a bond on your road usually costs you about 100 bucks. And, you know, and it's safer for them, too, because you never want a town to say, "Oh, well, I really don't like what you did, because I don't really like you, so I'm in." Because I've had, I've had select people do that in a town before. And thank God you have your insurance company, because if it's true and a real problem, okay, then they pay up. But if it's not, then, you know, they tell the towns, whoever, "Hey, settle down. You don't have that right." So I think what you're saying is you... But would we have to set what the bond would be?
You would.
And how are we going to know what the bond would be? Because we don't know what that road, we don't have the cost of the road.
We would have to reach out to somebody to do that calculation for us.
Or, yeah.
And to determine what the bond...
And then I think what Emmett's kind of asking, and I, maybe, you correct me, I don't want to speak for you, but what he's saying is you're, they're not going to get occupancy to be able to build their house until the road...
Until the road is complete.
Until the road is complete.
Right, but the problem would be is that the subdivision is already completed. And if there's no road, then we end up in problems like we have with Mr. DeJoulebach, who wants to build on his lot that's all the way on the end of a paper road.
But he, then he needs to bring it up to spec.
He can't build it because the neighbors, it just becomes a mess.
So if that's the way it works, then we should have had these folks build the road first and then give them the subdivision.
You can't build the road until you have the subdivision. It's like a chicken in the egg.
I think you can.
Yeah, so a lot of the times I've seen it is that the road construction... Well, typically, most projects, the road construction, the road would get constructed before they, before they do any of the building. But especially where it's a, where it's a private road, there could be, it could be a condition that they build the road prior to getting any building permits.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then that kind of solves it. Because the other thing from the town's standpoint is by building that road now gives you access to the pond, which the last time we talked a little bit about it, where it didn't seem like there was much of a water source at all in that area.
It's three and a half miles, it's six, it's seven miles round trip to the top of Little Hill with a load of water. It takes a long time.
Who have another comment?
So I think, you know, this has been an education to me, being a select board member for five months now, amongst the other things in life, that maybe I've been educated. But with that being said, I think we need to approach these things in common sense. And I think we're, we're saying it. And with respect to Russell, because Russell does have a position here where he has to be on top of these things.
I'm just pointing it out.
No, no, but with respect to you, and I don't want you to think I'm going sideways on this. But with that being said, you know, I think, I think Emmett and you and I are going to be saying the same thing. I don't see making these folks put money down, some bond for what they're going to build. And I get the fact that if the lots are, lots are built, you can't get there with the road, the road isn't there. I just don't see common sense with that. Because to get to the lots, you're going to have to have a road. And if, if for some reason, and knowing folks as little as I do, but I have trust here, I don't think, I don't think we're going to have a problem. And I think sometimes we, sometimes sort of boulders in the way. And maybe it's time for us to take a little different look at that. And I think, I think an extra expenditure here, and they're putting a lot of money just in the D and E of this gentleman sitting here, developing firm and all that. Let's approach it with a common sense approach, and with respect to Russell, what you have to do. I, as a board member, I don't want to see them having to put money, because that can be decided with the other two members. But I think my colleague, Gagnon, will be, and I'll say the same thing, and a road agent, the same as you.
I would rather, I would rather say, well, if you don't finish the road by, I mean, it's going to take a bit. I mean, it's going to cost a lot, but they have to get the road in there before they can even build. And what's to say, what's to stop them from doing it in sections? Or with two, I mean, there's no, nobody gave them any limits that the road had to be built within six months of them...
That's another option.
Doing that. And I just, I just think the bonding thing, which, like Marlo said, it's only 100 bucks.
Well, I'm not saying for that. I'm just saying for the law. He was comparing it to logging. This could be two different things. That kind of road bond. I mean, I've had to have one before, but I haven't had it in a long time, so...
It's another step. And the engineering firm is here. They've got a plan.
Yep.
And I know I have no vote at the end of the day here, but I just think it's another hoop they don't need to go through.
I agree.
Another option is to say if the road isn't built within a certain period of time, or if both the subdivisions, it goes away.
That's true, and having an easement down to the pond doesn't do a whole lot of good if there's no room to access them.
You can't get the pond in without the...
And you can't get the pond in without the road. So it's, which came first, kind of, situation. Dean and John, what do you think? What are your opinions?
Oh, I think I'm with the, as easy as we can make it for them. We make it for them as long as it's legal.
How do you feel about the bond?
I'm one of them type of persons.
Yeah, it is a private road, and they have to have it before they can build. So there's no... And the pond is a benefit for every one of us on Little Hill. What I'm saying, the road and the pond shouldn't be an issue.
Because it's, what, 900 feet of road? 900 feet of road? And then each driveway off in that road is going to have to still get a driveway permit?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, no, no, I'm just making sure. And a lot of them driveways, what we discussed, will going to be like 500 feet long?
Mostly three. I think it was almost three.
Three, okay, yeah, three.
That way it's within your...
So you have to have a driveway permit in place before you can get a building permit? And the driveway has, the private road has to be in place before you put the driveway. So I, I just, I think these folks are going to do it right. I mean, they, look at what they, the engineer and the people that they have working for them and...
Okay, so instead of a bond, what is the, what are the feelings on having a time limit for the approval? Having the road finished within a certain amount of time for the approval of the subdivision? Putting a time limit on that, just to get the road done. Marlo says no, right?
I feel like, like, like they've got, I'm kind of on the same token of kind of what John had said. I like how he said that.
Okay, Dean?
Yep.
No time limit?
I don't know what the time, I mean... You know, you say this fall you're clearing possibly, and you can't do much more until you build the road.
First off, you've got to get all the permits.
Yes.
Everybody can get a road permit or something.
Well, that's what this is.
Yeah, that's what we're doing right now.
We're doing it right now.
But still, it's, uh...
Okay.
We don't want that.
Was there anything else we could shoot this house?
It's up to you, and we probably want to...
I don't know, but I don't know.
Yeah. Well, if you have questions, though.
Do you have any more questions?
No, I'm very happy with the process. And I, again, maybe I'm a little different here, but I just don't want to... Sitting here with an engineer with that, I don't know how many sessions, with people who want to come to this community and live in this community, they're all professionals. You know, it's just, let's make it right.
And then I just have, you know, just...
Your time is up.
I'm just asking this question to maybe ease some people's minds, but your engineer's going to work with you through the project after tonight he's not done, correct?
I'd love to keep going. So assuming that this gets conditionally approved or whatever, we have to go back and make changes to that, to the plans and everything, and then give them back to Russell, make sure we, make sure we did all, addressed everything from the engineer and all that. And then, once we're okay with that, we'll make MYRs. They come to the planning board, they get signed, and then they're, they're good to go for construction. We very, very often stay involved in the construction aspects of the roads. And we, Ryan and Lauren and I haven't really talked about that, but we do that quite often. The favorite part of my job is construction. So, but that's something we can talk about in a later meeting.
No, I just, it's all good, because there's only so much money to go around. We need the money for taxes, so, so thank you for helping.
Were you happy?
I mean, he's a, he's a public relations person.
He says it all.
I wish I did more work in Webster.
On page two, there's a sample motion with the standard stuff.
I'll just double check myself.
And guessing we want it to be conditional on the HOA agreement.
That's my only concern, is just to get that agreement, yeah, from the HOA. Just the liability of the board.
And then when we get that approved, it should be put on the plan as well, what a book and pages for the HOA.
Yes. I make a motion that we accept their application, or we approve their application contingent on the HOA agreement. The language on...
There's other things that are part of the sta, I put the standard motion when we... Kind of the same for every subdivision.
What would we do without Russ's?
Yeah, this is what we do with every single one.
Russ is good.
It gets to one with the red. So these are the standard things we do for every subdivision. And then you would add the, the one with the HOA conditionally at the end. That's the part with red, it's whatever additional ones.
So we need to accept all six items, the same?
Yeah, and then you add the conditional one, because that's the standard walking of the bounds, the submitting of the MYRs, and all that stuff.
Yes, the approval major subdivision case 45-01, submitted by Christopher and Lauren Oliver on the following conditions. Number one, setting all boundary markers per subdivision regulation of the town of Webster, New Hampshire. Submission of three updated paper plaques. Submission of two final MYRs. Each boundary marker shall be flagged for easy identification with surveyor's tape above ground level. Walk on all the bounds by designated planning board members. And the last condition is the HOA agreement. And can I have a second for that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We appreciate y'all working with us through this. I don't know how else to express my gratitude so far.
It's good to see, as John would say, you know, good people to the, to the town. It's good. So I can come back now. You can, can she come back now? I thought she was mentioning, I had, Michelle had to hold her back. I just have a related question that, that... Can a major subdivision ever be rescinded?
So there are times when you...
Not that we're playing with it, but I...
Would rescind the subdivision, but I think it has to happen with a certain... So if they reasonably start the construction, can't rescind at that point.
Of course, yeah. Curious. Would you want to just make the poor guy nervous? No. No, I just thought of it, because there is our, there is our way out of things.
I think there's only one time we've ever, since I've ever...
Oh, you're seeing, I see what you're saying.
Where we've considered it.
Yeah. All right, so are we ready to move on?
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, buddy. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
To me.
Our next item is driveway permit for lot three dash one twenty-one. And we've got new, some new information here. New plans. And we did hear, um, one thing from, um, Rob Olinsky, who isn't here, and he, he was saying, one of the things that we had talked about was perhaps something at the top, a hammerhead, a turnaround for an ambulance near the top before the grade gets steep. But if the grade is the new grade, tell, tell us about the changes.
So, town requires the first, uh, twenty feet to be at five percent, so we're matching that.
Yep.
And then, it's gonna be a fifty foot radius vertical, so it's gonna be very gradual, going to the steepest part of eight point eight seven, and then back to four. So, we've knocked down the grade some, ended up adding a foot, uh, to the cell walls, to bring that house up a little bit, bring that whole parking area driveway up. As well as lengthened the overall driveway. To more of that kind of original plan from the, uh, proposal back in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
So, it's a lot more similar to that driveway.
What do you think, Emmett, have you had a chance to look at this?
Oh, I just got it, but it, so the driveway is gonna be coming off in Battle Street, of course. And then swing around and follow Battle Street. And then go running on the outer side of the, the house.
Yep.
Towards the log cabin.
Yep.
The roof there that everybody talked about.
Yep.
And then, but you're not gonna go all the way down, you're not going down to the second level with the driveway.
No, no, that's staying up, so.
So, it, in Rob's, Rob did have a good idea up on top, where you said you were gonna pull some of that gravel down. So now it sounds like you're gonna kinda leave that there.
I would prefer not to have to leave that there, cause I need a big retaining wall. I would make an actual parking pad up top.
Up, parallel to the Battle Street.
Yep, but I'll have twenty feet at five percent.
Yeah.
That you'd be able to pull into, if you need just a spot to stop up top.
Yeah. Yeah?
Any other questions from everybody? I mean, some of us were there and looked at it before, and so we've got this nice little, it would be put up, so we could see where the level was gonna be, there's a lot of fill going in.
Yes.
So there'll be room for your vehicle as well as an emergency vehicle?
Yep, yeah, so at the bottom will be a full parking area, which is about, uh, almost the forward of the house, so I think I have it at thirty-seven feet, twenty feet.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I've watched the slides, right, I don't know how many years Emmett, he knows more years than me, uh, he's, I know, been involved in a couple things with. But this young man was out there, and we left that meeting, that last meeting, probably nine, nine thirty, quarter to ten, preparing things for us to be there, which I was pretty impressed with, and when Emmett and Addy and others asked questions, he was prepared to answer those questions. I think he's done a lot, and, you know, as a board member and a non-voting member, I was pretty impressed, and, uh, does that feel good with it?
The first twenty feet of the five percent grade, is that gonna be just the driveway? And then the separate place for a vehicle, or is that?
Uh, that would be just the driveway.
Just the driveway, so.
Yep.
The vehicle pulls in that five percent, like to, of five o'clock, it says it's gonna block the driveway.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion? I make a motion to accept the driveway permit as is. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Well, welcome to you too. All right, do we, um, the next item on the agenda is to talk about the new, um, I think maybe because it's already quarter to eight, we might want to postpone that, but there are some.
Well, next meeting, I was gonna warn you, we're gonna have, I think it's Unitiler Eversource coming in, I always get that confused, to talk about a project they're gonna be doing on one of the scenic roads.
It's, it's Eversource, the young lady contacted me to find out who to talk to, and I put her to, to Dana, and then Dana got her with Ross. But, um, it's Bashan Hollow and Garrish, they wanna do some tree work. And, um, they needed to know if they could just go do it, or what needed to be done, and I said it was a scenic road, and we needed to have it airing up.
So that's gonna be on the docket for next meeting.
Okay, so you take care of making the official note?
It's already on the agenda, so it's already, it's already there. And, um, the other thing that we're gonna have is some members from Bill's very late coming in. Because they wanna talk about separate residential arrangements. Other thing that needs to get done before the end of the meeting is we need a motion for reimbursement from the Oliver subdivision escrow. So I made up the motion, and the invoices are in there, if you wanna look at them.
Oh, okay, it's, it's to reimburse us for the engineering.
For the engineering ward and the review from Central New Hampshire.
Anybody else who want, I mean, I'll just make the motion, if everybody's finding that. I make a motion to have the town treasurer issue a check from the Oliver subdivision escrow account in the amount of twelve oh three, twelve hundred and three dollars and ten cents, to reimburse the town for the following invoices from the Central New Hampshire Planning Commission. Invoice number si, one six six three one, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the planning review. And invoice number one six six five three, in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ten cents for the engineering review. Can I have a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I think we just have minutes, well, we are gonna have to do the CIP at some point, but we can hold up on that for the next meeting too, if you wanted to.
Um, cause we should, we should spend a little time talking about the changes in state law, relevant to, that we got, that you added.
So I think the big one, the biggest one is the ADU change.
Yes.
That all lots are allowed in ADU by right.
And they don't have to be connected, right?
Correct. So I think that's something we might wanna discuss, what the requirements are gonna be for these ADUs, if we're gonna have requirements above beyond the state, and if we're gonna require, like, a building permit, like our current building permit structure, so that we know when they go in. But those are things that the board would need to consider, and if we were gonna do something like that, we would have to get that prepared at town meeting, and come up with some sort of amendments to the ADU requirements. That's something that the board would have to skeleton include in it, so. My assumption is based on our impact fee ordinance, it says it's based on the dwelling unit, so we might be able to already apply. But that's something I would wanna discuss further with either Central New Hampshire or to make sure it's confirmed.
All right, so then I believe we need to, um, are there, is there other new business? At some point, we need to appoint a new, or elect a new assistant chair, right?
Yeah, vice chair.
Vice chair, because since you're not a full-time member.
Well, she can be the vice chair, be an alternate.
You can?
You can.
Then we don't have to.
Cause our previous, our previous vice chair was an alternate, so. You can if you still wanna do it, but I know I've had a conversation with you, you weren't, you didn't know if you wanted to.
It's not your favorite thing.
It's not your.
But you did just.
We're just taking over, it's not my favorite thing, so.
And she just got it done.
Done it twice, and you did it when I showed up, you had great jaws.
So tag your it. Okay, so we have two sets of, um, minutes to approve. The first is for our regular meeting on Monday, July first. Um, there's one change that needs to be made, it says that we had at map three, lot one twenty-one, so it just needs to change to Town Hall. Other than that, any, uh, corrections? All in, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve, we need to get, make a motion to approve immediately minutes of Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty-five.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the other one was the special meeting where we went up to the site on, on Battle Street and looked at it, and, um, we just have to, uh, approve these minutes. So, could somebody who was there make that motion? I wasn't.
Yeah, I was not there.
Oh, you could do it.
Yeah. I will make the motion that we approve the minutes of the July date meeting.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I guess, not everybody would. Well, does it matter that the minutes are only being officially approved by two of us?
It's fine, cause we have a quorum, if the rest of them are abstaining.
Okay, good.
So that's still acceptable.
Yeah. All right, I believe we are ready to adjourn.
I think so too.
I second that. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
I think he's got a question, do you have a question?
I was just gonna, see if I could talk to Russell about what the next steps are, come to his building permit, if we have time tonight.
I think you've done most of the building permits, so we're just waiting on that.
Yep.
I'll have to double check it, but I think I even.
I think you need to send me some waivers for your electrical and plumbing.
Yeah, you, you write us a waiver, if you're gonna do that and do a self-install, you would have to send us an email and note that on the permit that you're gonna do a self-install. Just so we can document that.
But that doesn't hold up the driveway.
No, the driveway permit's done. The driveway permit was holding up the building permit.
The driveway permit just needs to be signed.
So if you're gonna come by and sign it, you can come by and sign it, or, or we can get on. Any number.
You know, I'll buy it, I usually do. I'll think I'll buy it in the morning.
Okay, that's right.
Still is definitely, uh, the name of the law.
Seeing you again?
Yeah, you too.
Yeah, so, whatever, it's, you know, we're not, we're not gonna put something in it. So we'll just put time, they'll grow back, it'd be nice. Great kids.